We are good.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the 11:19 work session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Everyone is in attendance with the exception of Mr. Mersky and Ms. Thiel. I'd like to now move to recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have two presentations. The first one is from Charles Rynus and Flow Analytics. He will present the student enrollment forecast. Please join me in welcoming Charles. He'll be joining us via Zoom or Teams on the screen behind us. And just wait till our technology people get him squared away. But please know, after he gives his presentation, there is an opportunity for members of the board to ask him questions. We'll be able to interact with him as you would in a normal Zoom meeting, per se. And there is Charles. Charles, good evening.
Yes, hello. Thank you for having me. I'm going to try to share my screen as soon as possible so you don't have to see my huge head on the screen. We're going to run through several figures from the enrollment forecast memo. You're now, are you now seeing my screen with figure one? Good.
Yes.
And you can hear me just fine?
Yes.
Good, thank you. And so we'll run through these rather quickly, but we can go back to anything you'd like to discuss or ask more questions about. Once I'm done, I'll have as much time as you need. First figure, just an overview for context, showing the township boundaries, the elementary school boundaries, and the school locations. Next, student density. So we have plotted the students, and this map is showing, you know, the greatest density of students down here around the Audubon Village where there's some apartment complexes, and the Long Ridge Pike, much lower density in the Worcester Township generally than in the Lower Providence Township. Historical population totals for the county, the district, and each township, showing that the district, in the first decade of this century, grew a little faster than the county, and in 2010 to 2020, a little more slowly. And while Worcester is smaller than Lower Providence, it's been growing faster in each decade, including a latest estimate that it's added several hundreds since the 2010 census. By age group, however, the adult population has grown in each decade. Age 18 and over added more than 6,000 people between 2000 and 2020. However, the child population has declined. After a little bit of growth in the school age population, the last decade saw a decline of about 900 residents counted in ages 5 to 17, and also a decline in the number under age 5, counted in 2020 census compared to 2010. So the share of total population that's under 18 is down to close to 20% of the district population. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission does forecasts for townships. These were done before the 2020 census. I'm not too convinced that these are going to be very accurate. They're kind of even lower than what we expect. But the student generation rate, this is the result of our comparison of student locations with recently constructed housing. And between 2017 and 2022, we found about 500 new single-family homes built within the district. And there were 158 K-12 district students living in those housing units for a student generation rate of about 0.3. That, there's about an even split between single-family detached homes and townhomes. And you can see the difference in the average number of students per home, 0.44 per single-family detached home. So for every 100 homes, that's 44 students. For every 100 townhomes, only 18 students. Another interesting thing about this is that the K-4, number of K-4 students is over half of the K-12 total. And that's mostly because people move into new housing with young children. And if we were to look at housing that's 10 to 20 years old, we'd probably see more high school students as families age in existing housing. And for future housing, we've plotted that on the map, showing locations of prospective single-family developments in yellow dots and prospective multifamily developments in the blue squares. So that table is showing these same developments, many of which are somewhat speculative. They are, they've been approved. In some cases, they're being appealed. So the notes really specify what the status is. Some small ones under construction. Of course, Reserve at Center Square was a huge development, but it's largely completed, and so doesn't have the impact in the future that it has had most recently. So my suggestion is, you know, keep an eye on some of these that are under review or under appeal, you know, if they suddenly emerge and get off, get started, then, you know, we'd love to come back and help you assess the potential enrollment impact. We compiled the historical enrollment by grade for several years, and the K-12 total has been pretty stable, especially compared with a lot of districts we work with that saw huge losses in 2020. Looking across at each row, the largest enrollment of each grade is shown in the tan or orange color, and the smallest enrollment in blue. So you can see the effect of cohorts in the diagonal patterns in some cases. For example, this current year's eighth grade is a relatively small cohort and has been each year as it has advanced through the grades. So what that means is, as they hit high school and this larger cohort moves out, there's almost certain, you know, some decline in high school enrollment, simply due to the size of the cohorts moving through. And this detail shows the individual schools with the same shading for the highest. And in fact, currently, the high school has its lowest enrollment in this seven-year period. This is a table we always make for districts, but in the case of Methacton, it's not that relevant because you have so few students from out of district, and also relatively few students, only 30 students who live in one of your elementary areas but go to a different elementary within your district. And so the transfer rates are very low. Nearly everybody goes to their neighborhood school. And for K-4 Elementary, we provide the detail, the matrix for each school by attendance area. So the rows are attendance areas, 449 K-4 students living in Arrowhead Elementary Area who go to any Methacton School, 446 of them go to their neighborhood school. So that was some context. And here is the beginning of the forecast figures. The, one of the first things we look at is the relationship between births within the district. These are births to women residing in the district by cohort. And for example, students eligible enrolling kindergarten this year, 2024, would have been born between September 2018 and August 2019. So that 1.12 ratio means that for every 100 births five years ago, there's 112 kindergarten students enrolled in the fact in school district this year. You can see what a difference the full-day kindergarten made in this ratio. Prior to that, the ratio had been at or below 1, and it's been well above 1 since. So for the forecast, it's pretty much an average of the last two years. 2022 may have been a bit of an outlier. And why does it jump around a little bit? Well, this, we had to make up a bit for this low birth cohort in 2021 because clearly, more people move in to the district with children between age, between birth and age 5, since this ratio was above 1. So the, there is not a direct one-to-one relationship between births and kindergarten. A lot of it has to do with in-migration, which is typical of an area with predominantly single-family homes. So our assumption for, excuse me, sorry to slip around, assumption for slowly increasing births due to population growth results in a pretty stable, slightly increasing toward the end of the forecast period, kindergarten forecast. We also do a high and a low scenario at the district level, and with only a pretty slight change in the assumption of the ratio makes a big difference in the number of kindergarteners. So if we return to a ratio closer to what we had in 2022, we could have 14 to 19 more births, more kindergarteners each year. Conversely, a lower ratio closer to this current year would be 11 to 20 fewer kindergarteners each year. So you can use this as the next couple of years unfold to see where you are along this pattern. We already know births that have occurred through impacting the next three years. And so these ratios, depending on where kindergarten falls, you'll know what the ratio is. Once the students are in kindergarten, they advance through the grades, and we've calculated that for the last several years, grade progression ratios. So the top row here, K1, is the number of first graders each year divided by the number of kindergarteners the previous year. And that ratio used to be higher, of course, before full-day kindergarten, when people came in from private kindergartens at first grade. Now, we'd expect it to be lower now that more students are in kindergarten. And in general, except for 2020 and 2021, most of these ratios are at or above 1, meaning that the district isn't losing students in grade progressions. The district often gains a small number, 1.01 would be, you know, 1% increase between each grade and the previous grade. So the last column shows our forecast based on a long-term average of grade progression. So we expect 1% to 2% more students at each grade in elementary schools, and maybe a little more between K1. So we put all that together, and the middle scenario, relatively flat enrollment, staying around 4,600, and just relatively small differences in the K to birth ratio and the grade progression rates can make a big difference, of course, 10 years out, a few hundred more or fewer students. In the middle scenario by grade group, the elementary forecast is pretty stable. The green line is high school, which is expected to decline for a few years due to the size of the cohorts graduating compared with those coming in, while the upper elementary and intermediate schools are expected to grow for the same reason, for the next few years. And the detail is provided here, under the low scenario, middle scenario, high scenario, and by individual school, matching the middle scenario. Generally, the elementary schools are pretty stable, a little bit more growth in the Worcester Elementary School, perhaps due to it having a little more anticipated new housing development. Also, some of this change has to do with just the existing size of the cohorts right now. But the, here you can see the detail of the upper elementary and intermediates growing over the next few years, and the high school declining. And that are, that is the figure, that is the extent of the figures. Would anybody like me to, would anybody like to take a closer look at any of these figures or ask questions?
So, thank you, Charles. As everyone can see, there's a lot of information within the report. Certainly, the members of the board have the full copy of the report. And I think in summary, Charles, if one would, to summarize this in one statement, is it reasonable to say that the district's enrollment projections for the next 10 years are relatively flat?
Yes, yes.
So with that, I'm going to ask members of the board if they have any specific questions, either about the presentation and/or the report. Any members of the board to my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thank you. I just have three questions. Some of them are just clarity on previous forecasts. The birth rates that you used, I know that there was highlighted by the community that there was a mistake or update that was done at one point. Are these, you confirm the birth rates from previous years going backwards?
Yeah, yes. We're really fortunate that the state of Pennsylvania publishes births by township. And I saw some correspondence about the previous mistake, and I think it is, it was related to revisions that the, that the state makes. So they have preliminary, like the 2023 numbers that we use are preliminary. So they may be a slight revision to them.
Okay, thank you. Just confirming. What is the definition of the year? It looks like you have the birth year, September 1st to August 31st. Is that what you would define as the birth?
Yeah, and that is an estimate. That, in the case of Pennsylvania, because it's published annually, our model has just split the calendar year into 2/3 and 1/3, which I've found to be slightly better than using the calendar year births in, when we've tested it in other places.
Okay, thank you. And then on figure 15, I do see the footnote here, but you did mention the long-term average related to...
Sorry.
The long-term average was used to, used as the progression ratio is moving forward. How did you account for the insertion of the full-day kindergarten into that average?
Well, that is pretty close. It's a conservative figure because it's, we only have two years of transitions after the full-day kindergarten. So we've got 1.11 in the first grade entering in 2023, and 1.01 this year. So we're using 1.04, assuming that, of course, an average would be 1.06, but we're assuming that the district, that there are still some people out there who are doing other things for kindergarten?
No, that, okay, very good. You're not really using, in the case of K to 1, you're not really using a long-term average. You're using a short-term average, but everywhere else, you use sort of the long-term average?
Yeah, and actually, it's generally a three-year average because we want to throw out these COVID years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Are there any other questions from members of the board to my right? Seeing none right now. Other questions to my left, Ms. Cantrell?
Talking as if I'm at work, I apologize. Enter, on one slide, where it says Figure 11, District-Wide Transfer Rates, intra-district transfers. I'm assuming that means, would that be private school students, per se, because they're enrolled?
No, no, these are, they're a subset of your total enrollment. Inter, intra-district transfers. So this is the 30 students who are depicted here, living in one of the elementary areas but attending a different elementary school. This is based on our geocoding of the individual student addresses.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. And then the other one was, I think, in Figure 8, the Reserve at Center Square. I do think, right now, they have more than just eight units. They've had a lot of more development there. There's many houses there. So I am curious if we could, if you could go back and just do an update on that one, because they have currently...
It was our understanding that there were 250 total homes. And in fact, we have assessor data showing the homes were sold and occupied, and we believe there are only a few remaining to be. And so that's what the 8 is.
Okay.
Only a few remaining.
Awesome.
To impact enrollment in the future.
Fantastic. I appreciate that, too. That's good to know. I think, too, then, my biggest thing, too, is I'd like to see that with the residential development on Figure 7. Just to note that you're looking in Worcester, just particularly, we're looking at Worcester and what's going on there, because that was one of our other hotspots that looking at. I know we're talking a lot about the high school, per se, but Worcester, I noticed that that's two locations that have 25 to 48 potential single-family home units being built.
Yeah, and I think those are actually, well, yeah, this, this new one, the application was just submitted, well, earlier this year, anyway. So it's not, we're, I don't think we got confirmation that it's been approved or that permits have been issued, but there are a few other small ones that are, where home building is actually going on. And those would be the IDs W4, W5, W6.
Okay. And then just overall, last question is, in Figure 16, when you talk about district-wide enrollment forecasts, and you've got the low, middle, and high scenarios, is it typical to see, I mean, you've got variations of 300 at the high-range differential, like you have your median at 4,600, right? So we think it might be flat. But there is, I guess, some concern of 300 at the high range, and then you go down, and it's, you know, another 350 or 340 for on the low end. Is that normal to have that, that number variation, I guess?
Yeah, it's, it's 10 years out, so there's a lot of unknowns. And we want to make sure that we're sort of providing a range. It's tough because, you know, we can't, we can't calculate a margin of error because it's not a sample. It's, all we can do is, from experience, you know, looking at the past and what has happened, you know, what if those developments that... You know, what if those developments that are under appeal, what if they took off? You know, what if there was affordable housing being built? What if there were more single family detached homes? You know, that's there's a lot of what ifs. But I think the first the first four or five years, we're pretty confident about. And those differences are are more in the range of 150 plus or minus.
Yeah, yeah, which which just allows us to look at knowing like how many classrooms are needed and to be able to build something that allows us space if there was that higher range. But thank you. I appreciate this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Purdue.
Thank you. I do have, and I don't know if it's the same explanation. I think it's on Figure eight, maybe provided for the Reserve at Center Square. And I'm looking at the map ID W six. And I'm wondering for the bell flower, is it the same as the rationale that you provided for the reserve with the number of units? And I'm wondering because I think we currently have students in that property already. Not a lot, but I think some are fully finished already and we do have students there.
Oh, the the bell flower?
Yeah, W six.
Okay, I, well, so I think 16 is the total for that development. So if it if there are some that are built already, then it's possible that 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 number would be lower.
Okay, and I.
But if we're looking at, say, one student for every two homes, roughly, you know, that would be a difference of somewhere between well, and and a range, of course, you know, somewhere between zero to 10 more students, depending on how many of those homes are built.
Okay, thank you. And I do have an additional follow up for Figure five in reference to the notes section. I think Note A references Tables three and four. Is that Figures three and four?
Oh, yeah, Figure three and four basically are the actual counts from the 2020 census. And I put the footnote there because this is a forecast that was prepared before the the Regional Planning Commission knew what the 2020 census was. So that's one of the weaknesses of the forecast.
And then I'm just wondering, are you also able to clarify what we are to make of that note in reference to? I think you have a statement that they will not match the official counts in. So the counts here, I'm thinking it's the 2020 forecast numbers would not match what we have in the 2020. And it makes sense, the 2020 census in Figure four and three. So then are you able to clarify a little bit on how we should walk away from that understanding? I'm not sure if you can clarify that a little bit more.
Well, I think this these I'm kind of familiar with how these regional planning agencies do these forecasts, and it takes a long, long time. So they come out with a a big forecast for a much bigger area, then they have to allocate it down. And so while they published it in June 2021, they started working on it in like 2019. And the census data weren't published at the yeah, the census data that came from 2020 at at the substate level wasn't published until the summer of 2021. So they had a forecast for the school district of 37,316. That was based on 2010 and the change that they thought had occurred from 2010 up to 2020. But then, when the real census count came out, it was 30, it was lower, 35,942. So the census didn't count as many people as what the Regional Planning Agency expected that they would have that they would count. And but the I think the the only reason we include this is because they of the although the base number in 2020 is different, I think the idea is the forecast is for continued pretty slow growth. And and I actually emailed them, the Regional Planning Commission, asking about their forecasts, and they're expected to update them sometime in 2025.
Okay, thank you. I think that helps clarify it much better for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purdue. Any other questions? Ms. Alston?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for this report. I was wondering if there is any reason to be looking at our population exclusive of Shenondale? I don't know if she because I know Shenondale has added a lot to our population, but not students. So that was just one question I have, if we should maybe carve out Shenondale from any of this data as we're looking at it.
Oh, yeah, that's probably that's probably partly why there's so much growth in the adult population. It's a population of older people who definitely aren't having kids. So, yeah, and and we we didn't include Shenondale in the map of residential developments. I think it was actually in the last report that was done by my colleagues. And I thought, you know, it shouldn't even be in Figure eight if it's senior housing. So, yeah, it's it's definitely, I mean, it's part of your total population when the census comes around and counts people. But it's definitely not considered to be a source of of enrollment growth.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And my other question is, has there been a survey? And and maybe this is census data that is not yet available through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. But do we have a sense of how many or what percentage of our housing units are owned by older residents? Just thinking about, you know, housing turnover, possible housing turnover, you know, forthcoming if we have a lot of aging or older residents?
Yeah, that actually is available from the 2020 census. It's also available from the American Community Survey, but 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 that's a that's sample data. The Census Bureau would up until 2000, they did something called the Long Form, and it's now the done with in the American Community Survey. But it's an even smaller sample than the Long Form it was. And so that the best data is still from the 2020 census. I didn't I didn't look at that, but those data are available. I could probably.
I would like it if if that data is available, I would like it if we could take a look at that and incorporate that into this projection for our community. And then I also wonder if it's worth revisiting these enrollment enrollment forecasts in 2025 once the the data from the the updated report from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission is available.
Well, it's probably not going to, I mean, they're going to obviously have known about the housing growth specifically at the number of units in the Reserve at Center Square. So I imagine they're, just like the state of Pennsylvania does population estimate showing growth of about 800 people or no, that's sorry, this one. The, yeah, the estimate showing about 800 more residents. You know, that there'll be a larger base year, but but they work with it's my understanding, if it's like other metropolitan planning agencies, they'll work with local planners to find out how much housing growth to expect and incorporate those in their forecasts. And I doubt that they'll be much different. I don't think a new regional forecast would be a reason to update the forecast. If reasons to update the forecast, and there are definitely good reasons, and that's why you wouldn't go 10 years, you know, without one. Reasons would include if some of those big developments start to be cleared and underway or if the incoming kindergarten were significantly different in size than than what we're forecasting. Those would be good reasons to update the forecast.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Graff?
Thanks. I couldn't get it to go. Thanks. Okay, my question is related to Figure 16, where we have low, middle, and high scenarios. So my question is, what is the basis of the high scenario versus the low scenario versus the middle scenario?
Well, one, the basis, I'd say, the bottom line is uncertainty. If we go back to the the K to birth ratio, you know, this this incoming kindergarten can really accrue a significant difference. So you can see if we just assume in the long run, you know, 1.2 ratio of the births versus 1.15, you know, that's 15 to 20 more births each year going, I mean, 15 to 20 more kindergartners each year, even without much change in the number of births. So that, you know, 15 times six or 15 times five, and suddenly you have 75 more students in K four just from a a different assumption about in migration, basically. So and and that would probably also could relate to a higher level of housing development or turnover. You know, we had a question about older people owning homes. If if those homes turn over to younger people, that also brings in a more of a elementary age population and and a higher K to birth ratio. So that's part of it. And then also, you know, different assumption, just a very slightly different assumption about, say, 1% more cohort growth each year, that will also accumulate. If you have 4,600 students now, you know, 1% more is 46. So if that were to to persist year after year, you know, suddenly you would have the higher forecast. But again, that's 10 years out. And it is tempting to look at the end year and and look at that big gap. But I think we would see it coming. You know, we last we we worked with you after the 2020 during the 2021, 22 school year. So that was three years ago. And those forecasts are actually at the K 12 level, they're actually pretty close to to this year's enrollment. Individual grades are some higher and lower, which is why it's good to do a a reset. But it's not the long run forecast is not terribly different. So, you know, for a district your size, doing a looking out, doing a reset every three years or so is is a good policy. Because I think you, if we saw something more like the higher or the low, then that would be a good reason to to rethink the long term.
Okay, maybe my question was a little bit more basic than that. And I I think what I'm trying to get at is, what's the percentage probability that we are going to be above the high, below the low, or between the high and the low?
Okay.
How about I ask it that way?
Yeah, a sort of looking for a confidence interval. Yeah, we're we actually do evaluations. You know, I haven't done a 10 year evaluation. But each year, when new data come out, I love to look at the actual enrollment. And and it's 80, 90% of the time, it's between the high and the low, just within the first couple of years. I've I've looked at some forecasts that that have been done longer ago. And of course, you know, there's the Great Recession, there's there's the pandemic. You know, so some of those things are things that were unanticipated. But I'd say there's, I'd say there's, you know, I would I hope that I can claim that there's an 80 to 90% chance that we'll be between the high and the low.
Okay.
In each year going out.
Yeah, that answers I think that answers my question. The other question, I guess, that I have is related to the birth rates. What justifies a 5% differential in the birth rate between the middle and the high? I mean, is that just a a number that you typically use?
Yeah, yeah. Well, also, just looking at historically, we don't have a very long history because of because of full day kindergarten. But but we see what the range can can be, you know, for a lot of other districts where we have seven to 10 or more years of either stable ratios or, you know, looking at the pre-COVID ratio in, you know, has and this doesn't apply them in fact, and unfortunately. But if 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 there if new current rates had recovered to the pre-COVID rates, then we'd be pretty confident that that they're a stable rate going forward. But so you see, there's a range in the three years that you've had full day kindergarten. There's a range from 1.12 this year to 1.26 three years ago. So we'd probably want to stay generally within that range.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions to from members of the board from for Charles? Charles, thank you so much for your time this evening, and thank you for presenting the report. I will follow up with Charles on some of the housing turnover questions. And if there's any other comments that board members have after this evening that you didn't have a chance to to ask, please send them to me. If there's any additional information that we think we need, I'd be glad to work with Charles to to gather that information for you. With that said, Charles, thank you this evening and have a great have a great day.
Yeah, thank you. Bye.
Next on the agenda, we have Mathacton High School project update. We have Mr. Josh Grice from CHA, our owner's rep, and Devin Bradbury from the Schrader Group, our design professionals. We have one slide to share with you this evening, just just briefly to keep you apprised of the the progress that we're making. of the progress that we're making. Mr. Greis?
Thank you, and good evening. So as we've been giving you periodic updates throughout the process, so far, we got through the conceptual design phase, and after that last board vote to formally proceed with the next step, we're now stepping into schematic design and then design development. And again, each step really just adds another level or quite a few levels of detail along the way. So with schematic design, we've started the process of communication with the township. The land development process, as you're well aware, is a key component for getting approvals and solidifying the schematic design effort. So we've started those talks. That will be ongoing throughout both schematic and design development. Some of the other tasks with schematic design include some more geotechnical testing, stormwater infiltration testing. We're going to be solidifying the scope of a traffic impact study, some preliminary phasing considerations as it relates to parking and access and everything that needs to be maintained on-site throughout construction. We're also going to have with Schrader Group what they call a taste test of materials. So in other words, material selection possibilities for that exterior of the building, whether it's brick, metal panels, limestone accents, those types of things, they can start getting some options in front of, in front of the board. Each step of the way, we will be providing a cost estimate update and value engineering opportunities, and really key, again, with board input and keeping the board informed of all the steps. There will be a vote at the February 25th board meeting, which is kind of the end of schematic design, that we are to proceed then into the next step, which is design development. So again, these are all steps along the way of getting us ready for construction documents, getting ready to bid. We just wanted to provide a quick update tonight. So I'll let Devin talk a little bit more about the design development aspect and what that means, but again, we're taking it step by step. We will be back periodically and obviously in February for a more comprehensive schematic design update before the next step.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening, everyone. Just to add to Josh's points before, land development also includes zoning, so those are two parallel processes that we're working with the township on currently. It's important to get in front of those people now because they are 12-month processes a lot of times with these projects the size. So it is a long journey ahead of us. For design development, we will continue those zoning and land development submissions. It does say end approvals, but don't expect the approval at the end of design development. That would be towards the end of the project here. We will finalize the site layout and circulation, will continue to develop the floor plans and elevations. Mr. Greis mentioned the exterior taste test. Schematic design is an opportunity for us to think about materials and think about different construction types so that they can provide the accurate cost estimate. The design development phase really gets into some of those details, so you'll have a much more defined cost estimate at the end of the design development phase, in which case we can go through that value engineering process one more time at that phase. It is important for design development, you will have a really detailed cost estimate that we will then go through the Act 34 hearing process. So at design development, we'll have a maximum construction cost, and that will be listed in the Act 34 hearing, and we cannot go above that threshold, or else we'd have to hold another Act 34 hearing. Also included, we'll hope to bring in a lot of the staff and student to get them involved in the process. Typically, schematic design is more of an overall administrative team with maybe some leaders from the staff members, and then we get a chance to really dive into the program and their individual spaces in the design development phase. It's always fun to have the students involved as well. We'll also develop a lot of the building systems, so the structural systems, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, fire suppression systems, all that stuff will begin to take shape in design development, and then we'll get to select some of the finishes to really get a handle on what the district is looking for in the high school. We do note an August 26th board approval, that is scheduled at the moment, but it does say September at the end of this phase. That is just because the Act 34 hearing would need to be approved for advertisement on that August 26th board meeting, and then the Act 34 hearing would be held in September. Questions?
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there questions for members of the board at this point in time, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, is there any insights from Warsetor on more the, what they're looking for or concerns? I know they, you had preliminary discussions, but have we gone any further with what, like, discussions about setbacks and things like that?
We have a general understanding of what they're going to be looking for, the types of things that they will be considering and providing comment on. They have not committed at this time to giving any feedback formally in writing. There really needs to be a sketch plan submission to them to respond formally, but we did, through those discussions already, kind of verify some of the things that we figured were going to be talking points, which they confirmed, so we can, you know, definitely fine-tune some of the points that need to be made publicly in those meetings.
From a curiosity question, the city view that is certainly in the news, are they looking to be going beyond two and a half stories?
Yes, Devin says yes, they are.
And then the only other question, I'm not sure where it fits in, or maybe it fits in after the fact, but what about potential energy grants? If you did a solar field, or geothermal, or any of those type of things, where does that fit in, in the costing and the understanding? If there, if there's a 10% chance that we might be eligible, what type of return on investment or not, not return on investment we might get for things like that?
So whether it's energy or any other available grants, we are currently pursuing those now. I wouldn't imagine you'd see much difference until we get into the design development phase at this point, but there are some other redevelopment authority possibilities that we're looking at. Sustainability obviously can provide some opportunities. We're not targeting a lead building at this point. In some cases, you have to achieve lead status in order to get grants, but we're certainly looking at every opportunity, whether it's energy-related or not, to provide some grant opportunities, but really, nothing, I don't think, would really take shape until we get closer to being what they consider shovel-ready. In other words, we have a viable project, we have a viable budget, and it's proceeding. So once we get further along, we can definitely bring those opportunities to the table.
Thank you.
Ms. Cleary?
This may not be a question for you guys, it might be a question for the administration, but somewhere in this process, have we built in being able to have additional public feedback on whether it's at the end of design development? We talk about final, we talk about conducting end-user meetings with students and staff, and I'm just wondering, is there more opportunity for the public to provide feedback?
Yeah, I think that's still in the development. We've had, we've had our one meeting so far since the formal vote to move into this phase, but there's a lot of planning that still needs to be conducted at this point in time. So we certainly, like we've done in every phase, you know, provide opportunity for feedback here at the public meetings before the board, as well as some other open public forums that we've had.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, members of the board? Ms. Graff?
See if I can hit the right button this time. So just for education purposes, could you tell us a little bit about, as you're estimating cost estimates at the completion of schematic design versus the cost estimate that you'll have at the end of the actual design development phase? Could you give us an indication of the differences between those two estimates and how close they will be or could be to the reality versus, I guess, how, you know, is it a plus or minus 50%, plus or minus 20%, you know?
Sure. So at this point, a schematic estimate is going to be around the same level of detail as the conceptual. Having some more information with geotechnical and stormwater and a site layout that we think is going to work, which might change from what has been presented previously, is really going to help. Once we get into design development, we're not just budgeting an overall HVAC system. We will have information regarding the type of system, the number of units, the potential extent of ductwork or piping, so that we can actually start to do takeoffs of linear feet of piping, the size of piping. So it's going to be much more detailed once we get into the design development phase. Schematic design, there's going to be a little bit more detail than conceptual, but certainly not to the extent of design development. And as Devin mentioned, that Act 34 hearing really is where the costs are presented and are somewhat finalized, so they need to be detailed at that point. So I hope that answers the question.
It does. I think in my world, I sort of think of it like this. The end of schematic design is like when the guy comes to your house and says, yeah, I can build you a pool for 100 grand. And then when you get to the end of design development, he actually knows what size the pool is, what shape it is, and how much the materials are going to cost, and he says, well, it's actually going to cost you 130 grand. Is that about right?
I'm not going to use that jump in cost as, as, yes, I'm agreeing with you, but that's, that's a good way of saying it. We will have much more clearly defined systems, quantities, areas, all that type of stuff.
Great. And the other question I had is, following up on Mr. Winters' question, what is the timing of the first submissions to Warsetor Township?
The, what's called a sketch plan will be happening within about the next two weeks or so, so that's the preliminary plan for them to provide comment on. At the end of schematic design, at the February timeframe, is when the actual submission will be made. So there's a preliminary submission to be made, which, you know, then gets formally discussed at the Planning Commission zoning meetings.
And just for the public's information, those meetings are public, and the public may come and comment on those designs and approaches to what we would propose to do at the high school property.
It is a public meeting in both cases, yes.
Okay. And the last thing, I was just going to follow up on the question about grants. At some point in the future, I would be really interested to have a presentation to the board about the types of grants that are available, what kinds of sustainability options we have, and this gets to your point about, like, is it worth spending the money to do a lead construction versus the grants you would get versus how much it costs you to do that? That kind of presentation for informational purposes to the board.
And just related to those lead grants, there was a program that has been sort of open and closed a few times over the past few years, which is the ACE program. It's the alternative and clean energy program through the state. They have been providing, I think upwards of $2 million to achieve lead gold. That currently is not open. If it were to open again, we could maybe consider that, but you're right, you're pretty much changing a lot of the design aspects, which may or may not, you know, provide benefit.
Right, the trade-offs may not be there. Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
If I could just add to that, Ms. Graff, I think what we, what we really need to do aside from all the grants is, is talk about all the possible alternatives to just taxpayer funding of the project, which includes the potential of, you know, doing a capital campaign, raising funds that way. So I think maybe a combination of all that stuff for the board sometime prior to possibly February, or if not February, March. Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Cankrow?
That's it, you know, that was exactly, I was going to ask the administration and even the collaboration with both of your groups, who've worked with districts before, you've seen additional funding coming through. I know when we did the walk at Doylestown, they had the funding of the pharmaceutical companies, and I'm just curious who led that. So if you're able to go back to prior projects that you worked on and just help us be collaborative of where we could outsource and how do we reach out, and what did the districts do? Was there a lead person, what, you know, just so that we can really look at other additional sources that we could do and not just be based on tax-based funding would be wonderful. And then the other thing is that I really liked that I followed with North Penn and the Schrader Group was the public feedback and interactive Lego pieces. Was that during the design development stage that you did that, or was that just more so like, no, it wasn't because they did not approve it, right?
Yeah, that was for a referendum, so we did that prior to the referendum, but that would have been done in the conceptual or schematic design phase.
I just think it would be really a great thing to provide interactive public opportunity, bring back some of the people, you know, and ask anyone else that's interested in seeing this design development to create that kind of atmosphere.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can discuss with Dr. Zerby.
Yeah, just see, see if that's something that would be an opportunity. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Austin?
Yeah, thank you. Just along, also along the line of grants, I would just suggest reaching out to Joe Webster, Katie Muth, Mountain Dean's offices right now to make sure that this is on their radar for appropriations.
Yeah, thank you. We actually have meetings scheduled, so thank you. Are there any other questions for members of the board at this time? Gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening, we appreciate it. As you'll see on the agenda, we'll also, next week, have the Spirit of Mathacton, where Principal from Eagleville Elementary School, Mr. Cochran, will present Spirit of Mathacton Awards. We'll have then the reports as listed. Please, please know that we did receive all the committee reports for this month's committee meetings, we just did not get them done in time posted, so we do apologize for that, but I want to thank all of the committee chairs for getting me the committee reports on time, they just did not get posted. So we will get them posted for the agenda to go live on, for Saturday. With that, there'll be other public comment on board action items for next week, board meeting minutes, and then we have fiscal items. Ms. Steffi?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Tonight, there are seven fiscal items for your consideration. Item 9A, list of bills. Item 9B, the treasurer's report. Item 9C, budgetary transfers. There are no budgetary transfers for approval this month. 9D, Warsetor roof survey. Approve Mark J. Sobak Roof Consulting, Incorporated of Luzern, PA, to conduct a Warsetor Elementary School roof survey at a cost of $5,400. Item 9E, Arcola facade survey. Approve CHA Consulting, Incorporated of Bethlehem, PA, to conduct an Arcola intermediate school facade survey at a cost of $18,700. Item 9F, 2025 master plan projects. Approve Conexus, Incorporated of Middletown, PA, a CoStarz-approved vendor, to provide engineering, design, installation, graphics, and materials for Woodland Elementary School HVAC controls upgrade at a cost of $302,500. Item 9G, district auditors. Approve the extension of the existing agreement with District Auditors Gorman and Associates of North Hampton, PA, with the following items. Audit fee, single audit fee, hourly rate, 24-25 costs of $33,000, 25-26 costs of $34,500, 26-27 costs of $36,000. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Just for the board's awareness, both items, or all items listed from 9D, E, and F were part of recommendations to move forward from this month's property committee. Other questions on fiscal items? Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, on, sorry. On item 9D, I had raised some questions at the property meeting, and I just am hoping to get answers to that stuff before next week's board meeting. The one, I don't know if you want me to talk about them again, but I had asked if our district solicitor had looked over this proposal, because I had some concerns about the proposal, the brevity of it. I had suggested some specific language in terms of...
I had suggested some specific language in terms of, in terms of the scope of work, the very last bullet point, when they attend the property committee meeting in 2025, what they're going to deliver to us, which would be, you know, to provide the survey results. And then I had some questions about warranty language or indemnification language or insurance requirements. I just wanted to make sure that the solicitor has looked this over, given how short it is, or if, and then I think I might have asked if there was a master services agreement instead that would cover the language that I would be more used to seeing. So, okay, thank you.
We will make sure that we have those before you, and we'll provide that information to the board in the Friday memo. Thank you. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, also on 9D, I don't recall the timing on this. I know that the reason that the property committee is looking at this is that, trying to make sure we understand the life of the roof, right? If there is a requirement to replace it, is this semi-slotted for this coming summer or the following summer?
Dr. Sergini?
Yes, thank you. If we were able to move forward with this based on the information that we received in January, the intent would be to do it during the summer of 2025, with the option to do it during the summer of 2026 if necessary. Thank you.
Any other questions to my right, to my left? Ms. Perdue?
Just a quick one in reference to 9G for Gorman and Associates. The line item for single audit fee, is there ever a time that we will require a single audit? Have we required one in the past? Because I'm just wondering, if we're doing an audit fee for the entire school district, when will we need an audit fee? I mean, a single audit?
So a single audit would be necessary if we receive federal funding in excess of $750,000. So right now, that would be typically your ESER funds, maybe?
So why, so that wouldn't be covered under the first item?
No.
Okay.
And I believe, if I'm correct, Ms. Steffi, the note that we received from Gorman was that it's likely that the district will need to have a single audit done every year of the proposed timeframe. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So it's likely that the district will need to do the single audit?
So would that, I guess the single audit fee then, would that cover, is that a fee that will incur for each single grant they have to do an audit on? Or, okay?
No. They, if you, if there's more than one, they pick one. So some years they'll audit food service, other years it would be ESER.
Any other questions, Ms. Austin? No, I'm sorry. Okay. Seeing no other questions on financial matters, we're going to move on to personnel items. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, for the consideration of the board this month are the following personnel items. Two resignations administrator, both for retirement. Daniel Bontempo, Assistant Principal at the high school after 29 years of service to the students of Methacton. And Timothy Barber Gallo, Assistant to the Director of Facilities after 14 years of service to Methacton. The Methacton family is grateful to Dan and Tim for their leadership. Dan is Assistant Principal at Arcola, then the high school, where he guided so many aspects of student life, including the scheduling process, and where he became a much respected and appreciated fixture at student events, including countless athletic competitions and arts performances, both here in the district and at our various district partners across the area. And Tim is the Assistant to the Director of Facilities, where he led the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the facilities, and where he stepped up and guided the department as interim director. The Methacton family wishes Dan and Tim the very best in their retirement. There are three resignations professional, rather. Emily Lettington, Special Education Instructor at Arrowhead. We thank Emily for her service to Methacton, and we wish her well. And there are two resignations for retirement. Jody Latanzi, Certified School Nurse at Warsester after 23 years of dedicated service to Methacton. And Mary Thomas, Certified School Nurse at Woodland after 30 years of dedicated service to Methacton. Jody and Mary are part of the very fabric of life at Warsester and Woodland Elementary Schools. Their depth of caring and knowledge have made Warsester and Woodland safe and happy places to learn and grow. Nurse Jody and Nurse Mary are an integral and an invaluable part of the lives of the students, staff, and families of those schools, and the entire Methacton family wishes them the very best in retirement. There are two resignations classified, again, both for retirement. Jeffrey Naylor, Utility Grounds Person after 24 years of service to Methacton. And Mary Jo DiRisato, Office Assistant at Warsester after 19 years of service. The Methacton family is grateful to Jeff for his many years in maintaining the grounds and fields throughout our district, ensuring the safe and effective use of our facilities and optimizing playing conditions for our students. And to Mary Jo for making Warsester a joyful place for students, staff, and visitors, especially through her leadership in the main office and the cafeteria. And again, the Methacton family wishes Jeff and Mary Jo the very best in their retirement. There is the addition of one updated job description for the Utility Grounds Person position. This is an existing position. This job description has the addition of experience and proficiency in the maintenance of small engines added as a specific qualification, and also the inclusion of painting job responsibilities that were added. We are replacing two members of that department due to retirement and are taking the opportunity to make some changes to the job description. There are three employments classified. Jenna DiFrancesco, Personal Care Assistant at Skyview. Logan Gietes, Paraprofessional at Woodland. And Catherine Mossip, Bus Assistant at Transportation. We welcome Jenna, Logan, and Katie. There's one uncompensated leave administrative, Taylor Parker, Director of Athletics and Activities for the time period identified. Three uncompensated leaves professional, all retroactive. Alexis Washington, K-12 Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Climate Counselor. Olivia Roberts, Art Instructor at Arcola. And Anita Morgan, Second Grade Instructor at Arrowhead, each for the identified dates. One uncompensated leave classified, retroactive. Kristen Bar Jones, Personal Care Assistant at Arcola, for the identified dates. Supplemental contracts for the Pupil Services Department. And the addition of three individuals to the classified substitute list. Karen McIntyre, Custodial Casual on call. Kayla Price, Support Staff Casual on call. And Sophia Slater, Support Staff Casual on call. And we welcome Karen, Kayla, and Sophia. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Are there any questions from members of the board? To my left, Ms. Cancro?
Marge, as a recognition of all the resignations, you know, these are really some really important people that are resigned, that are retiring, which I'm happy for them to do. And I'm kind of bummed that they're not finishing out the school year. But we typically acknowledge, and they come at the end of the year. Do you do anything to make sure that the school district knows, like, told the administration that recognition of these people that are resigning, I keep saying resigning, but retiring now? Can we show some sort of support and thanks?
We do. We generally do both internally and then here at the open public meeting. And then in May, we will have all of these people back again.
But right now, are we going to do some kind of a letter out to people, just to acknowledge the retirements of the mid-year people? Can we?
Yes, we'll work with the individual building principals to ensure that that information is shared out as well.
Thanks.
Other questions to my left, Ms. Perdue?
I just have a question in regards to 10G3. Um, this is, you're saying this is a replacement in reference to the bus assistant at transportation? When was that position, when did that position become available?
We've had a bus assistant position posted for a significant period of time. This individual position became available at the end of August.
So what is the process for filling that bus assistant position?
For any position, we posted for a period of time that is generally posted publicly. We post both internally and externally. We then go through a series of application reviews and interviews for all positions. And there is also a vetting process whereby we do reference checking. And then at that point, we do recommend individuals to the Board of School Directors.
Dr. Sergini, if I could, has it historically been a challenge to hire people for these positions?
Yes, it has historically been a challenge. However, we have been able to fill multiple of these positions over the course of the last several months. So we have shown recent success in doing so.
And I only wanted to get a little bit of clarification because we eliminated a position in transportation. I just wanted to make sure that this is not something.
No, this is completely unrelated. This is a bus assistant.
Yeah.
We have bus assistants who are scheduled to ride certain of our routes based on student needs on those buses.
That's what this position is.
That's correct.
Perfect. I didn't know just because the way they say bus assistant at transportation. So I didn't know if it's meaning within the transportation department, or is it just for, I wanted to get some clarity.
Transportation is identified. It's the, where they report to
Okay.
Each day.
Thank you.
Other questions on personal items to my left? Seeing none to my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I certainly recognize all the retirements. And as Ms. Cancro said, a lot of great people retiring. I just, there does, I think Mr. Bontempo retiring right before the scheduling cycle for the high school might have been the incentive for retiring at the end of the year. But I do have concerns about, you know, the knowledge related to that. And I think, Dr. Sergini, you had indicated that we are looking at using Power School and some other tools to make this more, I guess, objective. I don't know what the right word is, but less in somebody's head. Is that correct?
Yeah, the long-term process for that is trying to engage the Power School system to be able to do the loads and builds for us and the schedule. Over the last couple of years, we obviously have been working with Mr. Bontempo, kind of the trajectory of retirement, recognizing that. And so we have a number of people that have been training with him, and he's able to assist us, even if we were to call on him in the spring, to be able to assist with some of this as well.
Any other questions to my right? Seeing none other, we'll move on to the next agenda item. We have no items for curriculum this month, and we'll go to policy. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Really, we're into our 600 series, as most of us know. Our 600 series does not have a lot of changes in it. Most of them are formatting changes and some clarification on different terminology and pronouns. And so for first read, we do only have the four items, as you see there. And second read are the items that we talked about last week. Again, very few edits on those items that you'll be voting for next week. And that's all the updates I have.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Any questions on matters of policy? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to other. We see that we'll have some gifts and donations. To approve the donation from community members to the backpack program for $104.37. To approve a gift of Skyview Student Spiritware hats and shirts from the Skyview Home and School Association for PBIS valued at $250. And then to approve a generous gift to lower the cost of Lost River Cavern Student Field Trip by Skyview Home and School, a value of $200. In terms of trips, there are two trips listed on the agenda for your approval next week. And that's to approve the high school wrestling team to participate in Selenco High School from December 6th to 7th. And then to approve the boys' high school indoor track team to participate at a meet in Virginia Beach Sports Center on January 10th to the 11th. We will have, we anticipate having some drivers to post here for your approval by next week. We don't have that list completed as of right now, but you can anticipate those drivers. And then the two agreements that are listed here, the first one is to approve the ratification of terms of the collective bargaining agreement between Methacton School District and Teamsters Local 384 effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. The terms were provided to the Board of School Directors. And then the second one is to approve the ratification of terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the School District and Methacton Education Support Professional Association effective July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028. And terms provided to the Board of School Directors as well. And that, that ends the matters associated with the agenda for your consideration. I'll turn it over to Madam President.
Is there anything for new or old business? Yes, Ms. Austin?
Just a question under other, under trips. Usually the, if any costs associated to the district is, goes with those trips, that's usually listed on the agenda?
Could you repeat that? I do apologize.
Typically, any costs to the district that are associated with the trips are listed on the agenda?
That's correct. I don't believe there's any, let me look.
Okay. And then, or say no cost to the district because that's also usually stated as well?
Yep. I'll check into that. Thank you. And I think it's also important that I can, you know, make that, make an executive session announcement for this next meeting. There was an executive session held on Wednesday, November 13th, virtually, for the matter of discussing contract negotiations with the district and Teamsters 384, as well as the district and the Mespa or Methacton Education Support Professional Association. That ends that comment.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Winters?
No, just before, I just want to get on the record. I planned a abstain for item 13D2, and I'll provide the reasons next week.
I do want to add, I want to, and I'll say it again next week, too. I want to thank the administration and everyone involved with the Teamsters and the Methacton Education Support Professional Association. I do think it really demonstrates a positive relationship that we have with all of the parties involved. And I'm excited that we were, you were able to, we were able to come to an agreement of early bird. And thank you. I think it's pretty fantastic. So, thank you. Any other comments or questions for old and new business? I do want to also, I'll say, when we have Ms. Pergolini in front of us, though, the Apex Award was fantastic to see and everyone involved. And Ms. Austin, do you want to talk about the theater? Because I figured it might be a shout-out that is due.
Just a shout-out to the talented cast and crew of Methacton's Christmas Carol. And now they are getting ready for tryouts for the Spring Musical, which it will be Guys and Dolls.
I heard it was a fantastic show. Any other comments or questions for newer or old business? And a shout-out to Ms. Fitzgerald for sure, for helping collaborate such a wonderful show and working with the students. They're very, very talented, so.
And that was a big cast up there with all those little kids. It was wonderful. Wonderful.
Big, big cast, absolutely. All right. All right, we'll now move to courtesy of the floor. All right, the Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before. But the Board, the Board asks you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. And please submit questions via email to information@methacton.org.
Jim Oliver, Warsester. Paul, so you know, City View, Ferencs got shot down. I don't think they like tall buildings in Warsester. Ms. Cleary, thanks for thinking about the taxpayers. I appreciate you thinking about us. I found out at the Finance Committee, we got another $1.6 million surplus. Overtaxed again, $1.6 million. I heard about your Teamsters, and everybody's happy with the way it all came out. Did your proposed new high school, a spending of $425 million, affect that negotiation at all? Probably think it did. You know, if they look at your debt service, I think it's going to be beneficial to you guys in your negotiations. I got to see the flow presentation. Totally unimpressed. Why didn't you get a projection for all those proposed developments going in? And say, look, worst-case scenario, how many kids will come out of that development if they all go through? Then you know. Because that high line is probably that because of that. I couldn't see real well, but I'm thinking it's a couple hundred units. You do a multiplier of 1.2 times 1.8, that's 300 kids. So, you know, I don't know what you guys are thinking about, but that's what I would have asked them. You also didn't ask them why his initial enrollment projections two years ago were wrong. He was off. If you look the original enrollment projections two years ago were wrong. He was off. If you look, the original 9 to 12 projections for '27, '28 were $1490. The ones he just put up there are $1397. He's off by 100, 100, after two years, right? But guess what's interesting about this, right? The lowest projection you have for the high school is $1397 in '27, '28. You know what that correlates with? Building your new high school. Isn't that a coincidence, how that worked out? Worked out perfect for you to sell your new high school. I think you got a problem with those projections that you need to look into. At the last meeting, the board passed a resolution for borrowing $19 million. Nobody told us about the interest on that debt. $29 million, for a total of $48 million. That's what you're actually borrowing, 48 million. I asked Paul some questions via email about, you know, since the borrowing was supposed to pay for capital projects and pay costs and expenses of the bonds, I asked about the expenses of the bonds, and he's got no clue. He says, we got to wait to spend the money to find out the cost on the borrowing? Is that how it works? Ridiculous. I also asked for, give me some detail on the projects, and I got none. I got, check the master plan again.
Thank you very much.
So you guys, I will finish my statement. I think you guys need to go look at the itemized, give us an itemized accounting of what you intend to spend the money on.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. I've presented this board a series of discourses, asking you to contract for a professional high school renovation study. This study is logical, convincing, rational, timely, and affordable. Others also favor renovation studies. The result? Silence by all of you, an absolute failure of your clear need for fiduciary duty. Admin recently conducted a community survey, designed to gather support of its goal of a great appearance plan for a new high school. The outcome? 360 submissions out of a population of about 36,000, or a 1% participation rate. Also, clear proof of communications failures and a lack of community buy-in for replacement of the existing building by a series of toss-up answers. Still silence. Careful review of the facts available to you last month reveal issues of a new high school design. Building new and demolition of existing results in a huge bill for $549 million payable over 30 years, as I detailed. The recent study by the Capable Schrader Group detailed a series of design limitations of the small hillside available building site. None of the recent independent facility assessments called for the demolition. Perhaps you are blinded by emotion or hypnotized. We are all imperfect, but it only takes three of you to call a special meeting on, on this or any other issue per school code. Whether fiduciary duty or oversight, your job in position is failed by your silence on the issue of a renovation study. The main goal of our strategic plan is improving ranking. Ranking is barely influenced by facility appearance. Education quality is mostly determined by teacher quality. That takes good salaries and heavy facility debt greatly limits that. Again, I observe more silence here. Discussion and action trump silence and inaction. I yield the remainder of my three minutes to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or anything from public, courtesy of the floor? All right, seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Craft, may I second? Mr. Winters? Meeting is adjourned.